Right, so we need to develop a system that would address the ninety-six percent, help them get better, and still deal with three to four percent who may be in the wrong line of work. That's a very small percentage by and large. And then the other piece that comes in here, we'll talk a little bit more about this as we work our way through, is a thing that's called the NCLB waiver, or ESEA flexibility waiver. It's what governs the state of Missouri right now in terms of federal law. And I'll lay it out for you here in just a second, so you can see where that comes into play. So these old airlines found us, I kind of said before, that they were indifferent to how people performed, and you couldn't find greatness. Because if everybody's really, really good, if everybody's rated great, then the ones who are truly great and what they're great at, we can't actually find it. Here's the big problem with that. We all talk about best practice. We want to find those instructional strategies that really work with kids, that move them in their learning. But if you can't find those, you can't replicate them. And that's what best practice is all about. How do you replicate things that actually work with students? And we couldn't find that, right? So therefore, we had no way to improve practice, and that was what the big problem was. And also that, we found really clearly in the research that kids on their own don't go out to recess and decide, "I'm going to go in and learn at higher levels despite the teacher." It doesn't happen. Kids aren't initiated on their own. So the one way you get kids to learn at higher levels is you get teachers and leaders to do a better job of what they're doing. It all hinges on growth and improvement. But if you said to somebody, "We want an evaluation system that's about growth and improvement," they would say, "That's, that's very different." Because that's not what it used to be. It used to be an activity we went through once a year, and in some instances, on cycles, five, once every five years, we would work with someone, do some paperwork, observe them for forty-five minutes. And then we would assume that what we observed for forty-five minutes was characteristic of what really happened all the rest of the time. So if you think about a person who's evaluated once every five years, that's a huge assumption. That what I saw them do one day for forty-five minutes is characteristic of what they do for five years in teaching. That's how it was set up to work, and it didn't help anybody get better. That's what that, that research finding, that's what that whole study pointed out to us. And so what happened after that is they said, "Look, if this is true, if this is what's going on in every state, in all kinds of districts, something has got to change." And then we had this big reform, started with the federal administration that said, "We're going to make some changes in schools." And that's where all of us started, five years ago, pushing that, right? It's, "We've got to change some things." Here's what they were most, here's what they were most bothered by. If we said, Ms. Robinson here was, "Are an effective teacher in the Kansas City Public School District, and yet, year after year, if we looked at her students, there wasn't growth happening with her students, how do we say that she's an effective teacher?" And that's what the study showed. We were saying, "A lot of teachers were really, really good, but the kids weren't learning." And they said the two have to go together, right? It's almost like, you know, that line they say about, you know, "If a tree falls in the woods, does it make a sound?" Well, if you're there to hear it, then yes, it makes a sound. If no one's there, then not really. It's the same question. Effective teaching is about kids' learning. The two go hand in hand, right? So we've encountered teachers that said, "You know what? I got up, I taught it." They just didn't get it. And this was a redefinition that says, you know, "Effective teaching is teaching it and what? Kids getting it." The two have to work kind of hand in hand. And what we're going to do through the system is help you get better at doing that, by looking at data on both sides. So that was the whole research. Now, that was five years ago. Here's what they found. Five years later, they went back and studied it, and said, "Okay, we've been thinking about this for five years. What have we learned?" Here's the first thing that they learned. More than design, it's about implementation, right? So we have a state model that people can adopt. The Kansas City Public Schools kind of did that. They, they made it a little nuanced for Kansas City, so they, they worked on some forums. And that doesn't matter. That's fine. Other, other systems use different models. The model isn't what's important. It's about implementing it. So it falls really in the hands of teachers and principals to make sure that it works right. So that was the first thing that they found. Here was the second thing they found. Multiple measures. That's the way you have to do it. So go back to what the paradigm used to be. We used to observe one day a year for forty-five minutes, and we said, "This is probably what it looks like every day." So I mentioned to you that I was a principal of a school. I had the pleasure, although if you ask my kids, I don't know whether they'd find it that way. I had the pleasure of having my kids in my school. So my kids would probably say, "That wasn't so hot, Dad." But I thought it was great, you know? So I was observing a third grade teacher one day, and she was up and moving around, and it looked pretty good and everything. And it was her one observation for the year. And at dinner that night at home, my daughter said, "You know, Dad, she only gets up when you walk in." Right? So it's a big assumption to say that what you see on a day is characteristic of what really happens every day. You know, and that's where this whole new wave of walkthroughs. So the research said, "You know, you don't need the group to be there for forty-five minutes. You can be there ten or fifteen minutes, but if you do it multiple times, your reliability percentages go way up. The chance that you're right, that you're really a good teacher, goes way up if you do multiple observations and use multiple measures, including, 'How are the kids doing?'" Right? So back when I was a principal, I'm ashamed to say, I never looked at how my child was learning as a part of the evaluation. I just looked at what I saw her doing. And this says, "You actually need both." So that's what the multiple measures part means. The other part here is that the observers have to be good at what they do. So one of the interesting things we found in five years of working on this is, we can take a video of a teacher teaching and put it up on a wall and fill the room with twenty principals, and we'll have them watch that teacher teach. And when it's done, we'll say, "Okay, what did you see? Is this teacher good at what they do? What are they really good at? What did you see happening with the kids?" And if we had twenty principals in the room looking at it, guess how many different answers we got? We got twenty. And it's not because one knew what they were talking about and nineteen didn't. It's because we look for different things. If I'm looking at engagement, I might say, "That was great." If I'm looking for content, I may say, "Well, not so hot," right? And if we don't agree on what we're looking for, then you get multiple answers. So the key is that this training has to be about, let's define what we're looking for. And how do you figure out what you ought to look for? It's about the kids. You look for the things that are serving your kids the most, and then you agree on it. You agree what it looks like, and that's what this training is about. And they said, "That's a real key. You have to get that part right." And then the bottom line, and this one is the most important to me, is through the evaluation process, you actually can help adults get better. And why is that important? Because it's the only way kids are going to learn better. That's the only way that it happens. So why go to all this work and do all this stuff if, at the end of the day, we're not helping adults teach better and leaders lead better? Because that's really the only way the kids in the building are going to learn better. That's our, our ticket for doing it. So that's the foundation. We, that's the stuff we studied five years ago, and everything we built in our state was based on those findings and that research. So let me talk to you next about the laws. You have two laws that, that come into play for you as a district in the state of Missouri. The first one is called ESEA. It's the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that goes back decades, right? And it's, it gets rewritten over time. When it gets old, they're supposed to rewrite it. Well, its last due date for rewriting was in oh-seven, seven, eight years ago. And they just haven't got around to it. So I don't know what job you guys have, but I've never had it to do with seven years long. You know, at some point, they, you know, things get done. But this one hasn't gotten done yet. They're working on it this year. I'll let you know what the status of that is. But that's federal law, and it says, "States, here's what you got to do." And when they say, "Here's states what you got to do," that's not really what they're saying. They're saying, "You, as a state agency, have to make sure all of your districts are doing it." So when they say, "States, here's what you have to do," they mean, "Districts, here's what you got to do, and you have a state agency that kind of keeps an eye on that." So what happened a number of years ago is our current president said, "If they're not going to rewrite ESEA, I'll give you a different path." And he called them waivers. And states were invited to apply for what they called a flexibility waiver, which would take you out from the law and let you design what you were going to do and submit it. So to date, about forty-five states live under waivers right now. And here's what you have to write to when you go for a waiver. There's three principles to it. First one says, "What are the kids learning?" Right? So it's based on college and career readiness standards. You have to, you have to lay out for what is it you teach your kids. So in our state, those are called Missouri learning standards. You have to describe what those were and why they're good for kids. The second one is, you have to talk to, "How do we know when schools are doing a good job of that? And how do we know when they need some help and support?" And that's called school accountability. And you have to describe that process. And then the third principle is, "What are you going to do to support effective teachers?" And that's silly. And leaders. There it is. Effective teachers and leaders. And that was the one that my office wrote to. What's the process going to look like? And so taking that research that I walked you through, we used all that research to say, "Okay, here's how we're going to do it. We're going to build an evaluation system, and we're going to have it designed to get, help people get better at teaching and leading." Because the research told us, "That's when kids learn, at higher levels." And so we summarized that research into things we call the essential principles of effective evaluation. You can see them right here. So principle number one up there at twelve o'clock is about research-based strategies. In other words, you can evaluate teachers on lots of things. I can remember being a third grade teacher in another state, but I had a principal that was very big on bulletin boards. And that's what I got marked down for, because my bulletin boards weren't attractive. And I was not good at bulletin boards. But thankfully, that principal left, and a new one came in who didn't care about bulletin boards, and suddenly, I'm not a bad-looking teacher. So we had all these, you know, these different targets flopping around. This first one says, "What matters is what helps kids learn." Bulletin boards are questionable about whether they help kids learn. So you've got to tie it to research-based targets. So we have teacher standards, and there's indicators to describe those, and those are set in the state, and those are the same ones that this district uses, and they're tied to research. Second one says, "It has to be differentiated levels." And what we mean about that is, it's not good and bad. It's not met or not met. Differentiated levels means there's a roadmap for getting there, right? There's benchmarks that you can move across. Research says, "Three to four is the best way to go." The state model had four of them in it. It's the same thing that you guys are using here in your district. The third one, probationary period, basically says this. A brand-new teacher isn't like a ten-year teacher, and you can't evaluate them the same way. So when I first got hired a teacher, I was handed the handbook, and I said, "Here's how we evaluate." And I was evaluated just like everybody else on staff. But the fact is, first-year teachers have a lot to learn. And so you have to, you have to realize that and treat them a little different. I needed to see my principal a little more than everybody else, because I was trying to figure out my way, right? Fourth one is on student growth measures, and this is that impact side. It's not just about what I do to teach. It's about what they're learning. The next one is about meaningful feedback. What we have found in the research is that it's critical that teachers get feedback on their performance. That's actionable and helpful. That's the key to them getting better. The next one, on evaluative training, we already talked about. All of us seeing the same thing and knowing what that looks like. And then the last one is that, if you're going to go through all of that work of those six principles, you use those results. And you don't just use them to decide who gets a contract next year. You also use them to decide, "Who are my strongest teachers? And can I use them as mentors or as coaches? Or if someone's having trouble with classroom management, can I send a teacher to them so they can learn some things?" So you figure out who your assets are, and you use them. You also figure out who needs some support in some area, and you get it for them. So it drives the PD that's done in the district, the professional learning, right? That's what that seventh one's about. Here's what implementation looks like for that. This school year, this fourteen-fifteen school year, districts had to be doing evaluation that aligns to six of those principles, right? So if you're using the state model like Kansas City Public Schools is doing, you're doing those six. Those are already happening in your district, right? And everybody has to do that across the state, all charters and all public schools. The last one comes in next year. Next year is when we begin having to pull in the student growth part. And that's tricky. Student growth on every single teacher is tricky. We have really good state assessments for reading and for math at certain grade levels, but we have a lot of teachers that don't teach at those levels. Some of them teaching high school welding or chemistry, right? Or music or art. And all of those teachers, too, have to have some kind of growth measure. So it's, it's a little complicated to get it in there. That implementation begins next year. It'll actually take two full years before districts have to begin making contract determinations using growth measures. So that's when these parts are due. And remember, these seven principles came from that research we did five years ago. What does a system have to have and do if people are going to get better at teaching and better at leading? So here's where we're at with the law. The top one on, the one on top here is the federal law. There's two gentlemen who are driving this rewriting of ESEA. Things were going pretty well this year. It was kind of moving along. Usually, what happens is, a version gets written on the House side, and a version gets written on the Senate side, and then the two come together, and they have to merge into one version. And both are moving along pretty well. The House side hit a bit of a block a couple weeks ago. I don't pretend to understand what happens at the federal level. It had something to do with Homeland Security needing money, and they had to stop that, what they're doing there, and find money. And while that was happening, they decided they all didn't agree with it as much as they thought they did. So the last thing we heard a couple days ago is that, "It's, it's not coming real soon." So that's where the federal law's at. So yeah, so the waivers are still the thing that kind of rules our state for right now. Here's what our waiver says. And we are due for a renewal at the end of this month, so we are submitting this month to be reapproved to continue to use our waiver. It says these things right here. Number one, there's a state rule that guides that alignment to those principles, and that's in state. So no matter what happens at the federal level, that state rule stays. And what that means is that this year, six of seven of those principles are in, and next year begins the seventh one. And that's going to be in place no matter what they do, if they do, at the federal level. It's important for you to know that. And what's important about the growth one, which starts next year, is we'll have our first year of collection next year, and then we'll follow it with a second year of collection. And then, when we have two years to look at, then we can begin using it to think about teacher effect on student learning. Multiple years. That's that multiple measures part, multiple years. So next year, even though we're collecting, we're not going to use it quite yet. We want to make sure that we've got that right before we actually start using it. And then the last thing that this principal thing does is it describes all the training efforts, all the different tools that we've made to try to help districts. And that's kind of the part that I'd like to finish with, and is tell you what our department does to try and help districts as they do this. It's all kind of summarized to the thing that we called an implementation rubric. And where that came from is, we had districts saying, "Okay, you tell me, I got aligned to these seven principles, and that alignment has to be this year and next year. What does it mean to align? What does it look like?" So I just got you a picture here of one of the pages of the rubric. This is the one on principle one. You remember, principle one was up at twelve o'clock. It was the research-based part. And the way the rubric works is, along the left side where it says indicators, that's the things that, in core data, Kansas City Public is going to be asked. Do you do these five things? Do you have these five things? That's what happens on the left side. And districts say, "Okay, how do I know if I've got that stuff?" Well, that's what you use the middle for. So the top half of the rubric talks about the things that are on paper, like the manuals that you have, or the handbooks, or the regulations. It describes, "Here's what you would have in terms of documented steps or protocols that need to be followed." And that gives you half of the rating. So you can say, "Okay, we've got manuals designed to get these things." They describe research-based components. We've got that in place, right? Now, the second half below that is the practice side. Because we all know, you can have great plans, but it may not be taking place. And practice data is gathered through surveys. So we've designed surveys that you give to random people in the district to say, "Okay, you're supposed to be, you know, being measured on research-based targets. If we ask a handful of teachers, would they tell us the same thing?" Because you would want both. You'd want the documents in place. You'd want the practices in place. And when you add those two together, it takes you to that, those ratings on the side, whether you're aligned or not aligned. And then, when you get that rating, you can go back to the first one and say, "Okay, department, here's how we're doing on these five areas." Yeah, go ahead.
So are you using that as feedback to you?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have, I didn't give you a picture of it, but we have like a summary report. And when folks are not aligned, we take the stuff out of the rubric that says, "Well, here's what you were missing," and that becomes action steps. So you're like, "Well, what do we need to do to be aligned? Well, this, according to the rubric, these are the things that aren't happening." And that's the feedback that goes back to the district. Yeah, thank you. Okay? Well, actually, I'm ready for questions.
All right, we have a round of questions here. Ms. Robinson, it's all handled up. Your order.
Thank you for your presentation. It's very informative. So the principals, they seem very individualistic based on the teachers. And I really appreciated the information about how it helps to empower the principals to do asset mapping and deficit mapping for the whole school. I wonder about, because it seems that it's very strategy-driven, very tactical in nature. But I wonder about how this impacts culture of the school overall. And also, I have a specific interest in the expectations having high, teachers having high expectations for students and the vision that they have for the student that matters.
Yeah, so let's talk about the culture one first. What we have embedded in our, in our website, there are three bodies of research that we draw on. So when you're working on a particular standard or indicator, there are three bodies of research that, we have strategies that have been researched over years that you can pull on to address that. So there's Bob Marzano's big thirty-year study. There's John Hattie's impact study. And there's Doug Lemo's Teach Like a Champion study. And these are all strategies that teachers have used to move student learning. So when you're working on any area, we, we don't say to the teacher, "Okay, you should be better at..." So my example, "You should be better at bulletin boards." Well, if no one shows me what good bulletin boards look like or how you make them, what's the chances I'm going to get better? And the system was, already said, "If we don't show them how to be better, it's not going to happen." So the research is about saying, "Okay, if you want to be better, add student engagement. Here are some strategies that research is showing raises engagement of students." And when teachers get that as resource to work with, that's a culture builder, right? And what we've seen in districts that implement this is that teachers have a voice in this more than they did before. And it's, what we said is, it's about, it's not about gotcha, it's about growth. And teachers say, "That's the kind of system that I've needed all along." So that's kind of the culture-building part. What's nice about the research-based strategies is that's where you get your high expectations, right? So we don't waste our time doing things that have very minimal impact and very minimal output. We're going to, we're going to spend our time doing the things that we know get big gains. So the example we use is that, if you're on a football field trying to drive the field, you can hand the ball off for three and four-yard runs, and you'll eventually get from end zone to end zone, but it's going to take a while. Or you can do passes that get you down faster. So what you're looking at are big gain kind of plays. And that's what the effect size stuff is. The John Hattie research says, "Okay, everything kind of works. What works really, really well?" And not only what works really well, what works really well in urban education when you're dealing with these kinds of students? What works really well with other kinds of students? So we start to get really smart about the things that give us the biggest kick, you know, the biggest bang for our buck. Because when you're dealing with students who are two grade levels below, you need some big gains. You can't just edge your way along, because you're going to run out of time at some point. So both of those, I think, get fueled by this, this embedded research. And our thinking, too, was, principals and teachers are busy, right? I know when I was running a building, I didn't go home at night and preview the research to see what we were going to do tomorrow. I was at games. I was grading papers when I was still teaching. It was very busy. So by embedding it in here, they don't have to go look. It's right there. A click, and they're already looking at it. And it has look for us. Here's what a teacher would do. Here's what the student would do. So I look at this, and tomorrow, I'm headed in to try it. So we tried to make it really accessible, and we tried to make it linked to research that says, "This is the stuff that works. Don't waste your time on other stuff." Does that help? Great, yeah. Yes, sir?
Ms. Montar.
I have another question. Thank you for that. Okay, so, so there's a probationary period where you're training, you're doing the training implementation. And so then those, it's kind of like train the trainer, am I correct? Okay, so you're, there are novice now at trying to implement this now to the next level. Then it goes to seeing growth, or is there another piece in between there?
No, the continuum that we developed goes emerging, developing, proficient, distinguished, right? So, but the key on this is to remember, there's nine standards, thirty-six indicators. And when I say thirty-six indicators, it means there's thirty-six particular families of skills that a teacher will demonstrate. And on each one of those, you're trying to move them from left to right. So one of the things that we're having to reculture people to think about is, when you're in a growth model, it's not about how much time you've been there. It's about how good you are at these skills. So I started teaching third grade, and then they moved me to junior high. I had some differentiated instruction strategies that I knew, and I found it really quick that what I used on third graders didn't work on junior high kids, right? So what would happen to me likely is, I might be at this end of the continuum, developing a proficient, and in my first year of teaching junior high, I might come back here. Because I've got to re-establish my thinking around a different set of kids. So this is all about competency on skills. It isn't about how much time you've been there. And all the other evaluation models before this were about, you serve your time, right? And then you get to a certain point, and it's like, "Hey, because you've been at it so long, we just assume you're good at it." This is built more on demonstration of mastery of skills. And it also, and this is kind of the harder one, on thirty-six different performances, what teachers are going to be great on all of them? So I'm going to have my areas that I'm strong at and other areas that I could be better at. So it's going to kind of, it's going to kind of be across the board on them. And it's about moving you to the right on those, on those skills. That's how it works.
So once you're getting that feedback of those indicators that they're mastering or not mastering, is there, you're allowing, so say they did not master a certain, you're allowing another time period for re-evaluating, re-training to make those gains. And then, once those gains are made at the end of the year, or two years, or three years, whatever the goal may be, what does the study say on looking at long-term? Because you're saying, "More bang for your buck."
Right.
So once those, those children that are two years behind reach, they have caught up, that bang for their buck, what does it say for long-term research on that?
Well...
Once they've mastered what they're supposed to be.
Yes, yeah, I'm with you. One of the things that was really key on this is that evaluations in the past were about adults. They were about, "What does this adult need? What was this adult doing? What is this adult doing now? So what does that mean about this adult?" This shift is about kids, right? So we may spend a couple years, and we have districts in the state doing this, who spend several years just on student engagement, because their kids need that. So you may have teachers who are relatively good at student engagement and ones who aren't as good at student engagement, but that's okay, because it isn't about getting everybody good on things they're not good at. This is not an adult game. This is about, "What do the kids need? What do the Kansas City Public Schools kids need?" And we're all going to work on indicators that help them. And the growth guide is all about, "How do we all just continue to get better? Continue to get better as we go." So there are going to be people starting all across that continuum, right? So there are things, as we study what indicators people were working on, there were ones that rose to the surface as being far more important for kids who are trying to catch up. And then there's other ones that we wouldn't spend time on. So as you may or may not know, Kansas City Public is focusing on three indicators. And the ones that were chosen are ones that are picked with your kids in mind, right? So there's a lot of, the best example is, in standard eight, indicator eight-point-three is about following the handbook. And when we did this pilot all across the state and people were selecting indicators, that one never got selected. And it's because it doesn't have a huge gain for kids. Does that mean we don't need eight-point-three? No, you do. There's going to be a teacher come along once in a while who, this is an issue for them. And so we need eight-point-three to pull it out and say, "Hey, look, we got, we got some issues with you. We'll put you on eight-point-three." But it's not a big gain one. So when you don't have that experience with the teacher, you can keep them on the indicators that matter most to kid learning. And that was another huge mindset change that people have to make in this system as opposed to the other systems. Does that help? And those bodies of research that we were just talking about point to which of these things are really your big gain indicators.
So you would see a fluctuation as they grow?
Yeah, you would. Reasonably, you would. And almost year to year in some ways, because you have new graph, new groups of kids coming through, right?
Paul, could you help elaborate a bit on, the Gates Millennium, the Gates Millennium studies started to look at the degree to which, in the teacher evaluation system, the student performance needs to be. And it gave, it gave a range of, sorry. he gave a range of, of options to consider the percentage or the amount of weight that should be given.
Yeah.
Factoring in that there are other things that influence student achievement beyond just the performance on the, on the assessment or even the growth.
Right.
So how is the State Department working with that research and, and, uh, in this whole percentage issue of how much weight to give toward, um, student performance, uh, as it relates to teacher overall evaluation of a teacher's performance in the classroom?
Um, we, State of Missouri is a no percentage state. Um, and when I say that is when we were writing to those three principals to get our waiver. In Principal Three, you had to design evaluation systems that included student growth and it had to be significant. That was the word the US Department of Ed gave us, that has to be significant. The way most states across the country made it significant is they would make it fifty percent or forty percent of the evaluation. And we argued that there's no research anywhere that says forty percent is the right number or twenty-three percent's the right number or thirty-two percent's the right number. And again, going back five years, we weren't gonna go down any road that the research didn't say was the right road to go. So we lobbied to the US Department of Ed that we didn't want percentages. We wanted to stick to the definition that if you're gonna rate a teacher effective, then there's evidence that their kids are growing too. That's what we wanted to link it to. And it took some pretty long and hard discussions for US Department of Ed to approve it. I can tell you right now that the State of Missouri is one of, one of maybe two states in the country that was allowed to use that definition and everyone else has percentages. After that happened, the Melinda and Bill Gates research came out. Uh, measuring effective teaching is called a MET project study. And they were the ones trying to figure out what does teacher effect look like? And when I say teacher effect, it means what do I contribute that helps my kids learn? And what they said was balanced measures. The things that you're looking at, treat them like a jigsaw puzzle and you're putting together pieces of information to make a picture of this teacher's overall effect. And they said, treat them as equal. Don't put percentages on them. Don't weight them. So in hindsight, it ended up saying exactly what we were pushing for. And we're gonna stay there too. We don't, there isn't anything anywhere. And states who have applied percentages are now backing up and slowing down because they're finding that it isn't playing out the way people thought it would. And then you end up with studies, New York, California are examples where they, they list teachers by ranking and say, hey, here's the really great ones, here's the ones that aren't so good. And those lists go out and they're wrong. You know, there was a New York teacher that was at the bottom of their list and it was like, this is an excellent teacher. And it's because the growth measures are really fragile. There's a lot of factors that go into knowing if a, a growth measure cleanly tells you what the teacher was, was accountable for. And until we get all that figured out, we do need to go cautious. We need to be thoughtful about how we do it. So we're gonna start it next year, but we're gonna start it slow. And there is no percentage or weight requirement for any district.
Mr. Ann. Thank you.
I thank you for your presentation. I just had a quick clarification present, uh, question. It's actually something I've asked the superintendent on occasion. How, how does the state know what, um, research is right or not right? Or how to make that determination and maybe even larger in the educated community?
You know, I think what we did is we went hunting for, um, what the researchers say about researchers. Um, that was, that seemed to us to be the indicator. We kept finding researchers who pointed to certain research sources as a way of making their point. And so those three bodies that we said, they, they just kept popping up over and over and over again. And then when we looked at their studies, they were showing results over time of how these kinds of strategies really had, uh, bigger incremental gains than other kinds of things. So that, the first thing was, who are they all talking about? And then when we were able to read into their studies, there was actual data that said, these are the right strategies.
Mr. White.
All right. Um, so first some clarification. I thought you mentioned it often that I wasn't familiar with. Did you say something like the John Hattie?
Mm-hmm. His name is John Hattie. He's an Australian researcher.
How do you spell that last name?
H-A-T-T-I-E. And, and John Hattie's big thing is impact. He's like, we know our worth by our impact, right? And it really applies to any, you know, if you're thinking about a surgeon, you would not only look at the skills they have, but how many patients do they lose? You know, that's, that's a measure of impact. That's his big thing.
No, I'll, I'll track down his book and read it.
Okay.
I appreciate that. So I'm, I'm not clear from the conversation. Uh, Dr. Green, do we use multiple measures to evaluate our teachers? And if so, what are those multiple measures?
Absolutely. We use, uh, student engagement is certainly one of them. Uh, we certainly are looking at differentiated instruction as being according to students and meeting them where they are. Um, I, you know, the other team come up and share other things that we use, but, uh, we're also obviously looking at, uh, the measurement of student, meeting of student outcomes. The continuous growth is, is another measure, but, uh, Mr. Gowan, you wanna speak more to that, but multiple measure?
Dr. Green just mentioned, all of those are factors that, uh, we have been working with the state as they looked at multiple measures. And in addition to that, uh, I worked with a school today and we were talking about the various sources of information they could use. Certainly the walkthrough tools, certainly the observations that they're making and their personal observations. In addition to that, we could take surveys, surveys of the students as well as surveys of the, of the teachers, uh, the conferencing, the feedback that they're getting. So we're using them. Those are just a few. We've talked about doing filming. Uh, some teachers have been open to that. So we'd come in and do a videotape of the teacher and then allow that teacher to look at it. So we're looking at a variety of what, of measurements that could be used. And then it'd be ultimately up to the principal and the, or the evaluator and the teacher to pick ones for us that they want.
So if I'm understanding currently in Kansas City Public Schools, we are using, uh, surveys of student impact, which is usually done by some kind of survey of the students as a means of evaluating teachers. And we're currently using, uh, student outcomes, you know, growth data as a means, you know, those two strategies, both of which, you know, are referenced in the MED and are referenced in this document talking about student growth and student impact. So we're currently using those two methods in the district?
We, we don't have to use that yet. We're looking at it. We're piloting that this year. We have a pilot going where we're, have, ask teachers to come in and voluntarily work with their principals to look at student impact and how that would impact their evaluation. Then we'll put some system into place next school year and then we have to have it in place the following year.
Okay, so it's not, so we're not using those now, uh, but those are under discussion for using next year. Student surveys and student growth data. And that, and we're currently allowed to do that under our, uh, CBA.
I think it's a point of clarification, is I don't, did you hear the question? Okay, first part is we're using multiple indicators and we're using multiple measures.
Yeah.
So that, that's in play right now. Okay, wanna make sure that's clear. Are we using student, now the, the other question was, are we using student input to determine, uh, teacher effectiveness? That's where we're not yet.
Yeah, and student growth begins next year, but it's a two-year implementation. So you'll have to actually use it on your closing evaluation in the spring of seventeen. So what we're doing with districts across the state is getting everybody ready for that because it's, it's a big scale-up.
And that's why we're doing a pilot this year. We've got a pilot going in every school, including teachers at every school.
Yeah, yeah, um, and so kind of the culminating question, and we've got some clarity on this is, if we're at a point which we are not at right now, where we're using student impact surveys, we actually survey our scholars and ask them, you know, how is this instructional experience for you? So that's student impact. And if we-
Pilot.
Right, that's, that's one type. And we're talking about piloting them. Um, and if we get to a point where we're actually using student outcome data, we're talking about growth that students experienced while in the care of a particular, or teach on a particular subject. So if we get to the point where those two are among the multiple measures that we're using, do those become issues for which it's eligible to terminate a tenured teacher?
They, they do when you have them in place. They do. To keep in mind, the one that we're not mentioning though are the observations. So we went from a system where you observed once, one day for forty-five minutes and sometimes it wasn't every couple of years. So a multiple measure means as principal, I'm in Lewis's classing three, four times a year, looking across three different indicators, as Dr. Green said, engagement, content, you know, use of data. And each of those have different things I'm looking for. That's where you get like this multiple menu of things you're looking at in addition to the other things that you guys can phase in.
Mr. Rogers?
Ms. Madsen.
So, um, I wanna, what happens in, um, you know, what happens in schools where teachers may have multiple preps? Where they're not teaching just chemistry one? They might be teaching, um, you know, a high school class, a middle school class, maybe two different middle school classes. So what, how do you handle with that? And also, um, where, how do you assess teachers effectively? If teachers are moving a lot, either within buildings or among buildings? So if they're moving every one to two years or two to three years, and I don't know what your rate of that occurring is, but what happens in those situations in the evaluation piece?
Yeah, so let's start with that one first and we'll back up to the growth measures one. What's key to remember is that evaluation in a district is, is a district-level policy. So it encompasses all of the buildings. So when everyone's using the same instrument and they, and they're all trained, because that was one of those principles we talked about, a teacher moving from building to building is gonna encounter the same instruments, the same process, right? And since the Growth Guide is set up in such a way, like my moving to the elementary school to the junior high, um, there may be a change in my performance, but I'm dealing with different kids, right? Um, so it accounts for that, that I'm gonna have to have time to acquaint myself with a different type of learner. But everything else about the process should look the same and sound the same. And that's why that evaluator training is really key. Now, in terms of the growth measures, the, the important parts are about growth measures is we're gonna sample, right? We're gonna sample growth of students. We can't look at it all and measure it all. Um, so when you think about observations, the average teacher in a year teaches nine hundred lessons. If a principal is really getting around the building, getting into classrooms, they may see five of those or seven of those or nine of those. That's still a sample of nine out of nine hundred and you have to look at growth the same way. If I'm teaching all these different preps, we want to sample. So we may look one year, if I'm doing trig and geometry and algebra at the high school level, maybe one year we're gonna look at, well, how are the algebra kids doing? And we'll get a sample of how their growth looked. The next year, we could take a look at geometry, right? But we just want some multiple years of data that says, when we sample growth data from the kids you teach, here's what we're seeing. So it's like, it's a sample of it. But you can't get it on everything that a teacher teaches.
And then I guess, um, a follow-up question is, and, and if you said this and I didn't get it, I apologize, but what's your technical assistance process? And how are you gonna provide technical assistance to five hundred schools around the state?
Well, that, it's a, it's a big, capacity is the big part of it. So the first thing I'll say is, is almost, um, kinda like the excuse which says, we've tried to keep this as slow as we can. Now, the federal reform has come in kind of a tidal wave and I feel for districts because it's really hit them in multiple levels. We've tried to keep implementation as phased out as they're gonna let us do. What we do for technical assistance is we have a webpage, we call it our Educated Growth Toolbox, and it's loaded with templates and rubrics and checklists and video clips, um, all kinds of training that you can get from there. We have a team of about thirty trainers that we've worked with for three years now. And we spend about forty hours a summer all training up. We all use the same materials, same handouts, same PowerPoints, same script. And then those folks are distributed across the state. So there should be a pair of trainers within an hour or two of every district in the state. And they're there to come into buildings or to host trainings to give them, you know, extra help. And then I always tell districts, if I can be of help, call me. And that's the reason Lewis and I started working together, is he called and I came out. And for about two years, I've come out at various times to work with either the, you know, the central office folks or principals. We met with several times with principals. Uh, so I just try to make myself as available as I can. And I've had the, you know, the pleasure of having some time available for Kansas City. It's not adequate, even with all that described, five hundred and sixty's a lot. Um, so, but that's what, that's, that's what we've got.
Yes, I had a question, um, and I'm not sure, I might not be understanding this correctly, but I'm looking, districts have the ability to select from any of these models or design their own as long as they meet certain criteria, correct?
Yes, mm-hmm.
So when you're talking about all these different schools, um, or different districts, there could be various models being used or their own unique one. But out of that, they're still supposed to meet these seven principles.
Exactly right.
I'm, I'm finding that somewhat confusing, you know? I mean, seriously, just trying to figure out, um, how districts decide which model out of this they wanna use or if these are not gonna be effective and we need to develop our own. And then, because I looked up a few of these models and then those models trying to make sure that you're meeting that criteria and using these principles.
Yep, there was a lot of debate on this. Um, and again, other states have said, here's the model you all have to use or here's two, you gotta pick one or the other, um, in, in a lot of conversation with districts. Um, and I agreed with them. They said context is very different. Kansas City Public Schools is a different context than Cow Gill. Um, different kind of students, different number of students, different location. I found it difficult to find a, a tool that met everyone's needs because context varies so much. And so while I feel like, uh, we made it more complex by opening that door, uh, what districts have told me in the last two years that we've been rolling this out is that that really helped. Because it allowed them to pull the information in, the research in, the principals in and say, what's gonna work for us? The other thing too though is we provided a state model. So we have instruments for superintendent, principal and teacher, all tied to the state's teacher and leader standards. And we said, use this or adjust it. So most districts that have done something on their own have started with the same standards, the same indicators, our tools, and then adjusted them a little bit. That's what you've done in your district and there's a lot of districts in your category. So they're more alike than they are different. But we thought it was the bodies of research that really mattered the most. So if you go back to that finding about implementation matters more than design, that's what the research tells us, is that the actual tool isn't as important. You can have all different kinds of branches, but a lot of them can get a, can get a bolt tightened, right? It's not about that, it's getting the bolt tightened. And we felt like when we gave, um, districts and charter schools that, that leverage, they actually worked together to create something that worked for them and you get that kind of buy-in. What states were experiencing where that was a required tool is people did it because they had to. And we wanted something deeper and more meaningful than that.
I just have a follow-up question with that. With you saying that it's been relatively new, what has been your feedback from teachers who've gone through this process? Have you had that opportunity yet to, or has it, is it still too young in the process?
No, no, we've, um, when we first piloted before it even got passed by the board, we had a hundred and five districts that were in the pilot. So hundreds and hundreds of teachers that were in it. And it was very new and we heard that a lot. But the consistent message we heard is two parts of it. One, I like the idea that you're trying to help me get better. That was one real consistent message. And the second one is for the first time I have a voice in my evaluation. I don't sit there in my classroom and an administrator shows up one day and does it to me. I have a voice in the indicators I'm working on, the things I'm trying to get better at. And I'm providing evidence. Here's evidence of how this is working. It, it, it's much more of a dialogue now. If there's been any line I've heard the most over two years is the conversations we are having are totally different than what we used to talk about. And that to me is a kind of a good measure that maybe we're on the right track. That isn't happening in five hundred and sixty places, I know that already, but it's happening in, in, in many and it's encouraging.
Mr. Rogers?
Can you use multiple measures without, uh, consulting with the union? And how do they play a part in?
Yeah, that's a tough one for me to answer for you because, um, at the end of the day,
Ms. Flinder?
Evaluation, um, policy is local. It's determined at the local level. The, the state has, um, the state has limited jurisdiction. Uh, the statute just says teachers have to be evaluated, but it has to be determined at the local level. So we have only so much jurisdiction, um, over how it's set up here. Then the local has to take over from there.
It's actually an easy question for me because we've had Andrea Flinders at the table all along. And so we discuss the, the whole approach, the whole evaluation system. We're looking at the multiple measures. We're making sure that the union is with us as we put this together. And we have those hard conversations and we don't always agree. But then we will talk it through and we come up with a commonality that we can move forward with. So, uh, in our situation, and, and Paul has actually found this in other school districts, uh, I think unions are just as concerned about this issue of teacher quality as all the rest of us are. And so if we do it right, it'll be, we'll all be successful and it'll be a much better system because of it. So we've chosen, and we work very closely with Andrea, we've chosen to have her at the table with us.
Thank you. Just a, I'm wondering about, uh, testing. Are test scores an indication of a good or an ineffective teachers? And also let me know about, uh, tell me something about your responsibility toward colleges and universities to send us quality teachers also.
I love that. That's great. Um, but the first one, um, it's student growth, growth measures on purpose. That's the intent. It's not about a static test. So we didn't find any good research that said the way a kid performs on a day is a good measure of how good the teacher is. We did find that over a period of time across a whole classroom, if an, an adult in a room could move them all to a higher level of learning, that was a good indicator of a teacher effect. What they do on a given day in April when they sit down and take a test wasn't. So it isn't about a state test or achievement, it's about growth, it's about movement. And it's not even about taking a, a student who's two grade levels below and getting them to proficient and at grade level. It's about moving them closer. So it's always about growth, not about a static measure. In terms of the educator preparation programs, we have forty of them in our state that prepare teachers. And we have the whole continuum of ones who do a very, very good job and ones that don't do such a good job. One of the smart things we did five years ago when we started designing all of this is that we designed it with higher ed in the room. So when we were working on standards and indicators and designing evaluation tools, we would have a lot of K-12 people in the room and we would have higher ed sitting there as well. We also make, um, our educator preparation programs, when they have student teachers, they have to use this model to evaluate their student teachers. So the same one you guys are using to evaluate teachers, they're now using on student teachers. Because what I remembered was I was prepared one way and then I was hired and life was totally different. It was like a pop quiz that I wasn't prepared for. And our big plan five years ago was to close that gap so that what you get are teachers who are ready to be successful. Now, um, our State of Missouri is writing an equity plan right now for the US Department of Ed. So I've been going around the state visiting with- So, I've been going around the state, visiting with lots of districts about how we get great teachers in every school. And the message I'm still getting is, um, too many of our teachers don't understand urban education. So, I can tell you this, the equity plan that we put out here in a couple of months is gonna talk about urban education. Teachers have to know what that looks like and how to come and be successful in that setting. If it isn't, we're doing a total disservice to a lot of kids in our state.
Ms. Roberts?
I'm glad you brought up that last and final point. Um, can we have a, uh, can you talk a little bit about race and the weight of race? Um, I've come, not necessarily full circle, but in terms of my observations in the classroom have really informed better my thinking around, um, how that plays a role. And so, when you, when you talk about urban education, are there any weights or conversation about diversity in the classroom?
There is. I think we're gonna address it more in our equity plan than we will in an evaluation instrument. It tends to be, the research tends to be that strategies, if they're good strategies, they're good, and they're good for all kids. Some of them, because they're really high effect size ones, will work better with certain populations of students. That's about as finite as that gets. But, I think we're really missing a cultural diversity piece in terms of our preparation. And, and as I was just saying to Mr. Evans, I think we have kids coming out who, and when you survey kids and you ask them, why did you wanna become a teacher? Guess what they always say? I wanna help the kids who need it the most. And then, they show up and they're like, whoa, but I didn't know it was like this. You know what I'm saying? So, there's, um, there's a little lack of reality that's happening there. But, we can, I think we can fix that. Because the experts on urban education are right here, right? So, we don't have to go looking far for that. But, we do need to make sure that what you experience here with your children gets communicated to the prep programs. I think we gotta establish some lines of communication we don't have right now. Uh, we need to do a better job on that.
Ms. Montor?
Um, my question was going more into about, are, are teachers that are dealing with the IEP students, our special needs, are, like we have here, we classify them as first Americans that have never had any type of formal education setting at all of some of our, some of our refugee or asylum families that have came here. And then, we also have another group that have had some formal education, but they're behind because maybe they haven't had two years or three years of, of school. So, how does this evaluation affect our teachers dealing with populations of our IEP children and then, our new Americans that we, uh, how we classify them that have never had formal
Absolutely, yeah.
education? And say, I have a, um, a child that came into high school that's typically is supposed to be a freshman, but has never been in a formal setting.
So, if you're thinking about the growth measures, what, what kind of is fair? What's fair game and what, what's kind of out of bounds? That's a part of what two years ahead for you has to look at. Um, what we've seen other districts do is, in terms of an interval of instructions, if I'm teaching a unit for two months, if there's a high mobility rate of certain students in that time, it isn't fair to hold me accountable for the learning of that particular student if they're never there. And so, they just make some adaptations to who gets counted and who doesn't, based on, was there a fair chance for that teacher to be able to educate that kid? So, that's some of the nuance of, of the math that you have to put in place before it's fair and ready to use, which is why we're using two years to do it. So, districts, again, context, districts with high mobility rates, the growth measures have to be attentive to that. And other districts that don't have that, it's not gonna be an issue. So, the more standardized we make everything, the less attentive it is to changes like that. But, that's part of what we have to work through with you for two months to say, okay, if this is about the effect I had on my kids, what are the parameters of that? If they don't speak any English, what does that mean? If they're only here a fourth of the time, what does that mean? Are they counted in with that pool? But, remember, we're always looking at multiple measures and aggregate numbers, right? 'Cause that's the fairest way to do it.
Mr. West?
Yeah. You brought up the issue that your evaluation instruments for principals and superintendents were similarly aligned.
Correct.
Uh, so, I gotta ask the obvious question. To what extent are we utilizing student outcome data or student impact surveys in our evaluation of our principals?
Uh, very much so. Um, we, uh, Mr. Davis, I think he's coming to try to answer that question as well. But, uh, we, we do factor that in. Uh, the, uh, every principal is given a target, uh, that they're expected to reach, both in the aggregate and in the differentiated, uh, areas, either grade level or subject. And, uh, as they come in to do their data consults and do their other interim evaluations or engagements, they're expected to report on the progress made therein. Um, Mr. Evans, you wanna amplify on that?
Yes. That is absolutely correct. We not only have several meetings with the principals, which we entitle the data consult throughout the course of the year, but we also have each and every conversation with the principal in their building and centered around their data. The principals have to articulate their plans for moving not only academic data in each of the core academic areas, but also attendance data. We look at behavior data, we look at parent involvement data, we look at data all the way around, and all of that factors into the principal evaluation. And I also have to share with my friend, Dr. Stansberry here, some of our principals have, uh, monthly meetings with their focus team visits, and then, also, there are others who have SIG team visits. So, therefore, we have some principals that have two and three, uh, conversations each month centered around their data, and that is definitely factored into, uh, the evaluation process. We look for trends as, uh, Paul indicated with the teacher. We look over a period of time. So, when we look at principals, we look at how long have they been in that building? What was their baseline data when they arrived? And so, therefore, we're looking for upticks, downticks, or a period of time we make definite, definite evaluation decisions based off of those trends.
So, I clearly heard you describe that we're using student, uh, outcome data, student growth data as part of your evaluation of the effectiveness of your principals. What I wasn't clear about, are you also using student impact surveys? So, really surveying the students to get a sense, you know, of what their perspectives are on the leadership of their faculty?
Yeah. So, each year, we not only administer teacher surveys, but we also administer parent surveys and student surveys. And that data is released to principals, uh, right at the start of the year. That is factored into, uh, their decisions that they, that they make. I do wanna, uh, say that, you know, maybe I don't wanna extend too, uh, too far, but, um, we believe that, uh, teacher's primary professional responsibility is to ensure that students learn, and we feel that principal's primary professional responsibility is to ensure that students learn. So, that student data factors into everything that we do, you know, in terms of the evaluation process. It is there, that student data and those, and those outcomes on students. So, I'm bringing that back around to saying that the student data, the growth of that data impacts on evaluations.
That part I got. What, what I think I heard you say is that you make the student survey data about, the student impact data available to principals of, so that can influence their decision-making, which is clearly wise. What I was curious about though is, to what extent do you, as a superintendent and cabinet team, what, to what extent do you use that data in your evaluation of the principal? Not just, to what extent do the principals use that in their administration of their buildings?
Yes. We use that. And in fact, uh, there, you may have been made aware of recent, uh, events where teacher survey data is used in the evaluation. We also use student survey data in that evaluation. We also use parent survey data. So, all of that does weigh in on the principal evaluation.
Ms. Montor?
Um, I wanted to ask this also. Are there any differences in, in this system between, um, a teacher that teaches a core subject and a teacher that teaches non-core subjects? Is there, or are they held, uh, uh, out of all the different, um, ratings, is it pretty much when the district decides their plan of rating, are that all the teachers are on that, pretty much the same level? Or is there a difference between core teachers or not?
No, definitely not. And, um, you know, according to the statute, you have to, you have to evaluate all certified teachers, no matter what content they teach. So, the system is designed to work with any teacher, no matter what area they teach in. Now, when you're looking at the strategies that would involve an indicator, that would be different by content. But, wouldn't necessarily, but you still, you still do the same process for every one.
Okay. That's, that's great to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming this evening. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, it's very informative.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, they've closed the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Kat.
Thank you, more members. Thank you, more members. With that, we are, uh, happy to.